The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavia Hall County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
This meeting of the Sharpe Board of Alderman will now come to order. Please rise for the saying of the pledge of allegiance to be followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed revisions? Alderman Corey.
I was going to propose a change to item G under board business since we only had one person apply for each of the appointments available. I was going to recommend that be added to consent with Ryan Portera on the airport board and Julia Penley on the solid waste and recycling.
Alderman Corey has proposed moving item 10G to the consent agenda. It's found on page three. And that is making the appointments, making the following appointments to the solid waste and recycling committee and the airport board. Solid waste and recycling will be Julia Penley and the airport board will be Brian Portera. Any objections? Any objection to moving that to the consent agenda? Any objection? Seeing none, please note the change. Alderman Perkins.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, a couple of changes. On page three of the revised agenda, item F, consideration of approval of the chief administrative officer attending the midwinter MML legal conference in Jackson, January 27th, with advanced travel authorized. We could place that on the consent agenda. And if we could put item J.
Let's do one at a time.
Yes, sir. That'll be fine. Thank you.
All right. So the proposed revision is to move item 10F on page three, the approval of the chief administrative officer attending midwinter, January 27th, 2011, to consent agenda. Any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none. Alderman Perkins.
Yes, sir. Mayor, the next item is not for placement on the consent agenda. I just want it at the proper time, if not now. I'd like to move item J under board business to follow item A.
Okay. The proposed revision is to reorder the agenda, moving item J on board business, the consideration of accepting the lowest bid, 419 parole from DynaPak for garbage bags, to item B, and reorder the agenda to accommodate that. Is there any objection to that proposed revision? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? Item J now becomes item B and everything else is reordered correspondingly. Alderman Perkins, did you have further proposed revisions?
No, sir.
Any further proposed revisions?
Mayor.
Alderman Carver.
Has item E been put on consent yet under board business?
It has not.
I'd like to place it in no, have no objections to item E, consideration of the approval of the city attorney attending the MML conference in Jackson, January 27th, with advanced travel authorized on the consent agenda.
Alderman Parker has proposed revising the agenda to place item 10E on page three, sending the city attorney to the midwinter conference on January 27th, 2011, to the consent agenda.
It's actually Alderman Carver.
Oh, excuse me, Alderman Carver. I'm sorry. Did I say Parker? I apologize. Alderman Carver has proposed that revision. Any objection? Any objection?
I object to that.
All right. Now, that item will remain off of the consent agenda. Any further proposed revisions?
Item L under board business, consideration of Randy Wall as a bond attorney to the consent.
All right. Alderman Dumas has proposed moving item 10L on page four, appointment of Randy Wall as the city's bond attorney for the tax increment financing bond for the cotton mill marketplace project to the consent agenda. Any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none, please note the change. Any further proposed revisions?
I'd like to place item K under consent, consideration of hiring electric department manager at grade 19, step one, and that position to be filled by Terry Kemp.
All right. So Alderman Dumas has proposed moving item 10K on page three to the consent agenda, and that would be the approval of the hiring of Terry Kemp as manager of the electric department at a grade 19, step one, of $70,053.12, with the standard one-year probation period effective December 1st, 2010, authorizing Ed Haddaway to serve at half-time, half-pay until December 15th for transition purposes to the consent agenda. Is there any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? Item 10K has been moved to consent agenda. Further proposed revisions?
Mayor, I need to address number H or letter H on page three.
All right.
This project and the legality of it was brought to my attention yesterday at about 3:00 PM when Mr. Lucian Borjra, who's here today, forwarded documents to me that are set to go before the board tonight, and they are an agreement and a resolution relating to the TIF bonds with the cotton mills project. I've reviewed those and the law relating to those bonds and discovered that some other documents remain to be reviewed prior to this board's action, specifically the plan that relates to the resolution and the agreement, and the plan that is necessary and called for by the code for this board to act on this matter tonight. That plan so far has not been located in our minutes. It's being officially adopted by the board. The agreement specifically references the plan. The code specifically references the plan. Because that plan is not an official copy in the minutes, the board legally cannot act on the agreement and resolution tonight, so my advice would be to remove this from the agenda.
So you're recommending to remove item 10H on page three from the agenda because the board legally can't take action tonight. It might help at this moment to hear any comments from council for the development group as to how that timeline would affect you if it doesn't get considered tonight.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the board, let me just try to tell you where we are with the financing of the cotton mill project itself. The developers, along with the bond underwriters, are in the process of trying to complete what we call a primary offering memorandum, and trying to complete that by the end of this week. As you can imagine, there are a number of things that go into that offering document, one of which is your future responsibility to reimburse the developer for expenses as it relates to public infrastructure, and that comes out of the TIF. At that point in time, you would issue TIF financing bonds and reimburse the developer. They'll have to account for each of the expenditures that it is going into infrastructure that's approved under state law. And where we are with that, we're, this type of bond issue is very difficult to get done, as you can imagine. They're trying to complete the offering memorandum by the end of this week so they can get into the market. They anticipate there will be large institutional investors interested in it, but they may want to take trips to Starkville, look at the ground, look at the city of Starkville and Mississippi State University in order to make an investment decision. And it's critical that we try to get this approved this week, if at all possible, because the timing is unlike you issuing bonds that will be a general obligation to the city of Starkville, which you could sell in a matter of hours, you know, once you put it into the marketplace. This bond issue is going to probably take several weeks to get it sold because of the type of investors who are going to want to come and see the project, get a feel for this community, and also for what's going on with the project. So they'll be taking trips and doing due diligence, and that takes a while. And the other problem is we're getting into the time of year where these big institutional investors will be closing out their books for the year. That's the reason for the necessity of trying to get this done and get it into the marketplace, starting next week. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that you or even board members may have.
And Chris, do you have an estimation of how long it might take you to provide a review of the documents?
As so long as we can find that the plan was truly spread on the minutes in the city of Starkville, the review time shouldn't take but a day or two. If those minutes haven't been spread on, or excuse me, if the plan hasn't been spread on the minutes, we may have to take action to spread them on the minutes before acting on the agreement, which would delay the process. But assuming that all goes well and the minutes are out there, then two days, one day, it should be quick.
All right. And the advice of council tonight is that that matter not be considered. We do have Mr. Bouzouat here. If you'd like to ask him any questions related to this matter.
Because of the complexity of this and I think the thoroughness that needs to happen, I think we need to listen to the city attorney and do our due diligence because as with other things, CBDC funds, for example, there were some surprises that caught me by surprise. I would like to, if nothing else, have time on my own to read this, considering it was just placed on the table today.
Is that a proposed revision?
So that's a revision. I would like to, and I'm more than welcome, once that is, once that has happened, to have a special call, to do whatever is needed to make that happen, but I think we do need time to cover the bases from our standpoint.
Okay.
So I ask that we remove it from the agenda.
The proposed revision is to remove item 10H on page three from the agenda, consideration of a resolution adopting the form authorizing execution and development of the reimbursement agreement for the TIF bonds for the cotton mill marketplace project off of the agenda. Is there any objection to that proposed revision? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? Item 10H has been removed from the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Bouzouat.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the board.
With that in mind, does item I need to be reconsidered at the time of that as well?
That's not necessarily something that goes with the TIF bonds. That's related to the CBDC program. It's certainly something that can be pushed off, but it's not related to the TIF bond.
I've got some questions with that, so.
Okay.
If it's timely, I'd like to leave it. If not, I'd like some more time to consider that.
It's basically, if I may interject, something, all of the incentive programs that are married into this one project will be defined and talked about in his offering documents for the financing of the hotel and the conference center itself. So it's all critical that all these things be tied down, and I'm not trying to tell you to make a decision tonight, but it could be the same time, Mr. Dumas, at the other one. But we really, if at all possible, need to wrap it up this week because it's critical to get these bonds in the marketplace. And I'm not trying to get you to make a decision that you guys are not ready to make tonight. I'm just telling you the status of where the bonds are. It's critical we get in the bond market.
Mr. Mayor.
This particular project, you've got so many different moving parts, the historical tax credits and the CBDC and other grants and the TIF, they're all integrated into the one project, and are critical to get the financing, the main financing for the project itself.
Thank you, Mr. Bouzouat. Alderman Perkins.
I was just going to say briefly that I support the recommendation of the city attorney. These matters need to get to us in a more timely manner, and they have to be reviewed properly by the attorney. So I support the gentleman from Ward 2, the city attorney. Let's go ahead and get off the agenda, and we'll take up at the proper time.
Is your proposed revision to remove item I from the agenda?
No, I was talking about H then.
Yeah. H has been removed. That was his original revision. I guess the thought that he was having is whether he wanted to remove item I.
I'd like to take that off and take it at the same time that we discuss item H.
All right. Alderman Dumas's proposed revision is to remove item 10I, the consideration of appointing the city engineer, chief administrative officer, and mayor Wiseman to selection committee to make recommendations to the board on the cotton mill project as it relates to the CBDC grant off of the, or off of the agenda, excuse me. Is there any objection to that revision? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? Item 10I has been removed from the agenda. Further proposed revisions? Alderman Parker.
Mayor, I have one under board business A, discussion of proposed changes of method of garbage collection. It actually was never my intent to vote on a changing the method of garbage collection tonight. It was only my intent to vote on having the board authorize going out for bid for the carts, just to see how much they would cost, so we could analyze that further. So I really didn't want to vote on, do I need to change that?
Do you have wording for the item? You can either change it or consider that under the item as it's worded.
Well, I don't want to vote on it as it's worded because I feel like it's premature to vote on it as it's worded. So do I need to delete that and enter another one, or can I change the wording in A?
There's nothing actionable about the item being worded as it is.
Okay, that's fine.
You can make whatever motion you'd like to make under that item, or if you would like the item to more clearly reflect your intent putting it on, we can change the wording on that.
That's fine.
Okay. Further proposed revisions? Are there any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda as revised, it's in order.
So move.
Motion has been made by Alderman Corey to approve the agenda as revised. Do I hear a second? Motion's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. And the next matter we have before you is the approval of the consent agenda as revised. Is there any objection to the approval of the consent agenda as revised? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none? The consent agenda as revised has been approved. We have no minutes this evening, so we'll move into comments by the mayor and the board. And the first, I wanted to have a brief discussion, get it on everybody's radar tonight, of having a retreat sometime in the month of January to both evaluate our progress on the current strategic plan and also determine what, if any, modifications need to be made to the plan. It'll be a similar process to last year. I guess the main difference is this year we will start with a working document, whereas last year we were compiling the document. Anybody have any comments, particularly dates, that absolutely don't work for you in the month of January, so we can begin compiling that? Alderman Carver.
I can't do it that, last week, the 27th through the 31st, I'm sorry. I can't do it the last week, which would be the 25th through the 29th, if at any time middle of the month is good for me.
Any others?
Mayor.
Alderman Corey.
We could all sit around talking about our relative schedules and everything, but you might want to, now that you've given us a range, just have us all email the best days, times, et cetera, to you or to the administrative assistant, and then come up with a date based on that.
Sure. And like I say, we've got a while to own this one in. What I wanted to do tonight is kind of gauge where your calendars were and see if January works. And the other thing I want to gauge a little bit, last year, we were on a Friday afternoon, Saturday morning schedule. How do y'all feel about that schedule? Is that desirable for you? Would you like to see us go with different times in the week this year? Any thoughts?
My personal thought, I mean, I don't think there's any good time to be away from the family, but that seems to be the best. Just, I know everybody here's got a busy schedule on Friday. I almost have to be on the weekend for me, Friday evening, Saturday. I mean, I hate to do it on a Saturday, but I can't do a midweek. It's going to be hard, too.
Okay. Any, is there anybody that does not like Friday and Saturday as a format for the retreat? All right. What we'll do is we can work by phone and email on a Friday and Saturday in January that works best, but if nobody has any objection, then we'll stick with that format. All right. And I would also like to announce that the community Thanksgiving event is going to be held at the Greensboro Center on November 21st this year. Always a wonderful program, a great way to kick off the holiday season in the community. So I encourage everyone to attend. And at this time, I would like to introduce the newest employee in the Starkville workforce. And Kira was recently hired as a radio operator records clerk for the Starkville Police Department. She is originally from Starkville and graduated from Starkville High School. Go Jackets! She attended East Mississippi Community College, where she majored in criminal justice. Kira is currently attending Mississippi State University, majoring in criminology. Before joining the Starkville Police Department, Kira was an afternoon assistant at the Creative Learning Center for children, for children, for one and a half years. At CLC, Kira was responsible for caring for many infants. Kira is the daughter of Ms. Jennifer Robinson and Mr. Keith Gardner, and she is the proud parent of a nine-month-old daughter named Madison Lee. She and her family attend Second Baptist Church, located at 314 Yake Street. Since Kira was a small child, she has always wanted a career in law enforcement and has gotten her start in the Starkville Police Department. When Kira has a break from work and school, she enjoys playing softball, traveling, shopping, and most importantly, spending time with her daughter, family, and friends. Please join me in welcoming Kira. And I have no additional comments. Are there any comments this time by the members of the board? Any comments by the members of the board? Are there any comments from the members of the board? Seeing none, we'll now move to citizen comments, and any citizen wishing to make comments tonight may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
Good evening to me and board. My name's Avon Tom Ward. Ward 7. Our, good evening to Vice Mayor Sif Trump and Alderman Vaughn.
Good evening.
The citizens, we have brought to your attention about the dangers in the sector. We have brought to your attention about the dangers of ours. The people that tended to be late arrived, we want them to be brought before you. The citizens, they feel like that are, the people that do not want to sidewalk, if anything happens, they should be liable for anyone getting broke up or getting killed. We have some mentally challenged people that are out. Community council has shut down one of their, shut down skills, and we have a lot of mentally challenged people out, and that makes it very fearful for them. Citizens is very upset at the remark made about the garbage bag. They're very upset about that. Our, they also feel like that, our, they didn't know that people could be so cold. The sanitation department, our director disallowed the hood. How cold can you be? Our, we were standing by the end of, we were being honored if we could keep the garbage bag. We not concerned about cars. Now, we can carry garbage bags, we cannot pull a car. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turn. Any further citizen comment? Do we have any further citizens' comments?
I'm Richard Muller, on Act 5, and I noticed today in both newspapers, Starkville Daily News and Starkville Dispatch, that y'all are going to discuss, consider the new economics collection issues tonight. And I hope that's what you do, is consider, because you've got a lot to consider. One of them is, I would certainly think that Eric, you really want to be sure you got your math right before you proceed any further. Now, there's a lot of issues here that you're not addressing. One of them is trucks that I've had to deal with is, you can't, one person or even two cannot pick up some of these large containers. 96 gallons, most of those are not going to be filled with liquids, but 96 gallons are 968 pounds, and most folks can't lift that. Having said that, it's going to take money to retrofit, to fit these trucks to, you know, be able to handle these vehicles. That was not listed in the paper today. So like I said, there's a lot of things that need to be looked at, and nothing is as simple as it seems. I mean, numbers and numbers, but sometimes the numbers don't tell the whole story, so you want to look real hard at that. You know, what's happened, what happens if these, if I have one of these 96-gallon containers stolen or run over or whatever? You know, who's responsible for that? I'm not going to buy another one. Don't want one to start with. We'll make that clear in a minute. But I feel like that if you got, you can drive around town right now, and you can see garbage cans on the street. Now, we have a city ordinance says that's not, you can't do that. But they're out there right now. So good, they're so long, I think they're taking root and growing there. And the code compliance officer cannot, cannot, cannot take care of those. Now, like I said, the ordinance out there right now, they just cannot be on the street, but they are. Now, instead of having one on the street, what's going to happen? We've got two on the street. So, and who's going to enforce this? This is something you better, on the front end, how much, who's going to do what? You go charge, you go find the renter, or you go find the person who owned it? So that needs to be brought up front. You might even want to have a public hearing on that. I'm concerned about the elderly. Now, I think someone said at one time that perhaps the city could, the employees could go to the elderly's door and pull this 96-gallon container plus the recycling over to the curb. Well, that's true, but what, how old are you have to be to become an elderly person? You need to put, you need to figure that out. Now, I'm 72 years old, I'm getting up there, but I'm still handling my garbage, more or less. But you need to do that. And since I've started recycling, I have very little garbage. In fact, most mornings, on Monday morning and on Thursday morning, my garbage goes out and stuff in this size. I don't need a 96-gallon container sitting in my garage, bigger space. So there's issues there that y'all might want to think about. Well, I think about it real hard. But anyway, before you get on this, and I think that there's a lot of folks against this, and probably I'm one of them, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Muller.
Good to have you back, Rich.
Further citizen comment? Mr. Burn.
Milo Burnham from Ward 2, and I have more of a question than I do a comment, and I was just wondering if anybody seated at the table in front of me can tell me what's going on with the downtown area that here with Thanksgiving coming up and the Christmas parade scheduled, that all the plannings have been torn up and Main Street is now a series of major muddy potholes. I realize that the downtown beautification falls under the downtown's merchants association, but I haven't been able to get any answers, and I doubt that with the holiday season upon us, people downtown, that we've made an effort to uglify Starkville rather than beautify it at this particularly important time of year.
I can answer that.
Can somebody tell me what's happening or going on?
I can answer that. Alderman Dumas wants to provide an answer.
The downtown beauti, or the downtown business association, what's now the Main Street Association, is contracting with Gene Merkel to replant, or to redo the downtown landscape. So the Indian Hawthorns are coming out, the Hollies are coming out, and they're replacing them with maples and other types of color, so more perennial, annual-type stuff that should be put in there between, or before the Christmas break. And that's why they're, they're trying to hustle through that as fast as they can so they can be in place by the Christmas break.
Okay. Could we get that in the papers so people?
We will. And I'm glad you brought, I actually had a note to talk about that, and I forgot about the citizen comment.
Because it shocked me to see that sound. Thank you very much.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Burn.
It's pretty exciting to see the stuff they're actually doing, so it should really help the appearance.
Will be done before the Christmas parade.
Their intentions are to be fully complete by the end of, by the time of the Christmas break. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Further citizen comments?
Oh, good evening. John Gaskin from Ward 3. I just want to echo some of the sentiments tonight about the garbage bags are concerns, really, and I'm And I've seen this in Oktobah County, Sun Creek Road, other places where these big ninety-six gallon cans are used being in the middle of the road. I've seen it in my own neighborhood because some people put their garbage out in the can. The ones who have garages can store it. And then you come home from work, and they're out in the middle of Humminbird Lane. And, you know, that's one concern I have with it is to see, you know, if you think 10,000 garbage cans in Starkville in the streets, what about cars hitting them? If they're destroyed, things of that nature. You know, as far as beautification, things like that, I think it could possibly cause a problem. Now, I don't know if these would be weighted to keep them from toppling over, things like that. But on a windy day like we had today, half of them would be in the middle of the street. You know, cost savings is important, especially in lean times, everybody's looking at it. But just because it's cheaper doesn't always mean it's better. I can go to a salvage store and buy a stereo that works today, it may not work two days from now. It's not always the best thing. I think Alderman Perkins had a quote in the paper, "If it's not broken, why fix it?" And I agree to him, with him on that because I think our sanitation department does an excellent job. You know, that would be my concerns, as well as the other concerns that's already been voiced tonight that I'm not going to repeat. So, you know, if you're getting quotes, things of that nature, I ask you to think of that while getting them, if they're weighted down. And, you know, one option is, which for the few thousand dollars that I pay in taxes each year, I like the little four-dollar roll of garbage bags. They're nice. But at the same time, I don't know if it's a state statute that you have to provide garbage bags, period. You know, it might be, if you need to save the money, why even provide the garbage bags? A lot of times, I really, most of the time, buy my own. One other thing regarding the garbage bags that I read in the paper about overtime for delivering them, one other option may be just to have a pickup location, like you have to do with the recycling bags already, just go pick them up. You're probably going to have some people who aren't going to utilize it at that point because it's too much of a hassle. But, you know, people who want to get them, go pick them up at the sanitation department, just like we have to do with the recycling bags. So just ask y'all to consider those issues as well, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskin. Any further citizen comments? Judge Mills?
Good evening, Mayor and the Board of Alderman. I'm Jim Mills. I live in Ward Two, Long Mutter, South Beach. I've been there forty-one years, and I have done everything possible in that forty-one years to uphold that community to where it is a good place, attractive place to live. I have property down on Craig's Frame Road in the country. I have four homes, and I am constantly chasing those garbage dumpsters. People come down there, they put them out on the road. They gone for two or three days, fishing or so forth. I get called, my dumpster's out in the middle of the road, or in the bar pit. And it's nothing but a problem. And I can imagine, if you'll drive out through the country and look at those garbage pails, they scattered everywhere. They look awful. And I have seen where dogs climb up on them and scatter them all over this road down there. So I just don't see anything that'd be attractive to the City of Starkville residents to have these garbage pails. And when I was a kid, they were called slot buckets, sitting all out on the streets. And I think something else we need to look at is the expense of making the change. And I don't worry if anybody's looked into it, but that's increasing our liability. These people do a fantastic job on the sanitation department. I watch them, I wave at them of getting off, looking both ways, getting over to a sack, putting it on. And I don't know whether you thought about it or not, but if you pick this dumpster up, carry it, and dump it, you got to carry it and put it back on the street. That means you have access to the traffic in the city of Starkville of being unsafe, these employees that's on these garbage trucks. And they do a good job for what they are paid. I thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Judge Mills. Further citizen comments?
I'm Wayne Fonder. Maybe somebody's read my letter, son. Especially you. And I was someone to say that far as I'm concerned, the garbage pickup, if it's not broke, leave it alone. But one thing, right now, I'm able to take my garbage truck and pull that little cart, but I might not be in a year from now. And right now, if I get sick, my wife's not able to. So who's going to do it for her? If I go out in town when I leave my garbage, who's going to put the cart back on the porch? Are you going to give me a ticket? A lot of things, thank God. And far as saving money, there's no way on God's creation you're going to save any money. Who's going to fix these carts when they break down? You got to hire a whole new maintenance man to take care of that. Is that saving any money? Absolutely not. So my thing, I ask you, don't even consider putting nothing out. Own bid, let alone drop it. A lot you can do nothing, as I said, and to be a big boss. So my recommendation is let the garbage go.
Thank you, Mr. Fonder. Further citizen comments? Do we have any further citizen comment? Any further citizen comment? Any further citizen comment? Seeing none, we'll move to public appearances. Is Ms. Matthews here?
She is.
Ah. We have one public appearance tonight, and it is by Allison Matthews, who is presenting plans for the annual Christmas parade. Ms. Matthews, you'll have a maximum of ten minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Plans are underway for the annual Christmas parade Saturday, December fourth, starting at 6:30 PM this year. By and large, we are planning to continue the same tradition that we've enjoyed for many years in town. One change will be that instead of going all the way to ending beside First Methodist Church, we are planning to turn down Washington Street instead, just in respect for a church event that's going on that date. And therefore, the filming of the parade will also be changed location. It will be filmed at, from the Cadence Bank Plaza location. Other than that, we expect all other details to be very similar or the same as they have in past years. And we do request for the needed services. The city has always assisted with closing of the roads and the police that are out that night to assist with that, as well as all of the other services in order to make the parade come off successfully, just as we have done in past years.
Questions or comments from the board for Ms. Matthews?
Only thing I'd like to say is, again, just thank you for coming and doing this, and this is a highlight of our community every year. And, you know, one thing I'd like to say is maybe the attendance is kind of up. Is there any way we could do some additional marketing? Or, you know, do y'all, do y'all have a campaign for that?
Perhaps. We've talked about that each year, and I know that there's a group of our community who would like to see it on Monday nights, and then other group of our community who would like it on Saturday nights. And either way, we can't seem to get, get it in everyone's favor. But we have continued to try it on Saturday nights for the past few years. I don't know if this is the third or fourth year that we've tried that. But yes, attendance is, is certainly a big issue, and we do want to see increased attendance.
And I think this year, we've got a, aren't there other events that year that kind of lead up to it, trying to make more of a week out of it?
The, yes. The partnership has been working with some other organizations. But the partnership has been able to acquire the Holiday Bazaar that in years past has been held on the university campus and has been under the responsibility of Campus Activities Board. And Jennifer Gregory in our office and Robin Kane are coordinating that, which will be at the Starkville Sports Plex this year. So it's a community event, and there has been a great response from vendors. That event will be December first, second, and third, with the parade then being on the fourth. And on the fifth, Sunday, there will be the Holiday Tour of Homes. And that also goes back to Alderman Carver's question. There has been some increased marketing of trying to promote this. It's just one part of a holiday week in our community as, instead of a standalone event.
Further questions or comments by the members of the board?
Can I ask her one more question while I've got you? I missed this year. How was Pumpkin Palooza? Was it, did it beat the top last year?
I believe the Starkville Police Department estimated 5,000, which was a, we thought we had a great crowd last year, and this year, we were blown away again. And many of the downtown merchants reported just really good nights, business nights.
It's good. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments by the members of the board?
And now, this is approved on consent, so we're good.
Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you.
And that will take us to board business. And item A is not quite the intent of what Alderman Parker had wanted on there, but was a discussion of the garbage collection system. Alderman Parker?
Sure, well, I mean, again, we started the discussion two weeks ago, and I felt like the next step to really truly analyze the cost was to actually get a bid to see how much the carts were. By no means was I asking this week or tonight to change the method. But I, but I would like to investigate further the cost of carts. And for all the citizens' comments tonight, I mean, all valid questions, I can assure you that all those questions have been asked and have been thought about and looked about, contemplated. And there is by no means an answer to every question. It's not something that I think this city would jump into haphazardly or do without any knowledge. So saying that, I mean, I felt like, you know, there's two things that really spurned this. One is, is it is a significant cost savings, and we just had a tax increase this year. And I felt like, I felt obligated, I voted against the tax increase, and I felt obligated that if I was going to say we didn't need a tax increase, I would like to find ways that we could save money in this city. I had some personal, I have some personal experience in garbage and garbage collection. So I felt like that was an avenue that I went to first. So I can assure you, on paper, there is, there are cost savings there. The other thing is sanitation workers themselves. I mean, we have paid out $180,000 in workers' comp claims over three years in the sanitation department. And trying to create a safer work environment for the workers themselves, I think is a valid point that we need to all consider. That there are issues, without a doubt. I'm not asking tonight by any means to change the method. I would just like to carry this to the next step and investigate it further. Would welcome any comments from the board.
Discussion. Alderman Vaughn?
I received a day from one of the, I've called today from one of the former Mavs, Ms. Rutledge. She had called, very, very concerned about this here, which I have been concerned about alone. And like I said, in the past, that everyone cannot push a cart. A lot of people can carry a bag, but everyone can't push a, push a cart. And from my understanding, a lot of municipalities that have gone to the carts, they have an old account problem, not the carts. And I believe the county having a problem, not the cart, and I'm mistaken. And I'm like the rest of them, something not broken, why are we messing with it? And for that reason, I wish that we would just kill this tonight at this table and don't take this no further. We stay with the bags as we got because we already increasing enough taxes. We constantly increasing taxes. It's not going to be, increase going to be in this?
There will be absolutely no increase in this.
Further discussion. Alderman Davis?
I really appreciate Alderman Parker's diligence in this whole matter. And I think, as I talked about before, I have carts in my house that I use. And, and I think that they, for all the listed, all the listed reasons last time, and I don't want to reiterate all those, but I think at the very least, I'm the type person that likes as much detail as possible presented to me. And, and I think, you know, especially when considered, you know, when considering the next item, which is looking at the acceptance of the bid for the bags, I think the least we can do is, is allow Alderman Parker to go forward, get the final numbers on the carts themselves so that we can make a more fully informed decision on this from the standpoint of what this really means from a cost-saving standpoint. Because like we said, the numbers are pretty astounding. When we look at the budgetary issues that we've had this year and the other type things, and you compare those across the board, I think, I think the very least we can do is just at least continue the process so that we understand exactly what those economic realities are when we can compare what's currently happening, what the potentials are for this system that obviously there are some issues. And, and look at that so that we can make a decision from our standpoint and know what the possibilities are. So I support at least going forward with the specs of the, of the carts so that we can actually get the bid, so we can see what they are from the financial standpoint.
Further discussion.
Alderman Parker would like to handle it.
Alderman Vaughn?
What's important, the citizens of Starkville are the cost. What the citizens of Starkville want are the cost. What's important?
Further discussion.
We should be concerned about the peoples.
It, it's important. Citizen input is extremely important. And by, by no means would I sit here and say, I know best, and this is the way we're going to do it, flat out. I would never, I'd never try to do that. We're just investigating this option, and if, I mean, I, I've received, I was very thankful that after the paper, article ran in the paper today, I received many calls today and talked to, returned to every phone call that I had a voicemail on today and talked to citizens about it. Talked to Ms. Rutledge as well. So, I mean, I received citizen input today, which I appreciate and need to make my decision. I mean, they were all, they were positive, negative, new, I mean, they were, they were all over the board.
Everything we see.
I'm not trying to change, I'm not trying to change the, I'm not trying to do anything new and innovative here. I mean, I just felt like this was something that, where we could have some savings and also provide a safer work environment for our sanitation workers.
Y'all?
I'm not going to take it any further.
Wait, wait to be recognized. We've got several of you that want to speak, so we don't end up with several. Alderman Vaughn?
Every time we go in other towns and see something working in another town, that doesn't mean it works here. And it seem like that's what we, that's, that's the, that's the route we taking. We go somewhere else and see it work there because it doesn't work there. It doesn't mean it work here in Starkville. It seem like every time something come up, we want to try it because somebody does try it and because somebody is working. That's not what we sit at this table for. That's not what we elected for, even though we elected to make the best for the citizens of Starkville. But it seem like every time we go somewhere and see something, we want to come in and try it.
Further discussion. Alderman Carter?
I think Alderman Parker was, he is trying to come up with viable solutions to save money. But, you know, it's always interesting, as an elected official, which subjects actually draw people's attention. And this is one that probably got some of the most amount of calls to that end. I haven't got a call in support of it yet, so I might kind of, if I'm going to truly represent my constituents, then I would have to vote against it tonight or even consider further, further considering it. And some of the, some of the things, you know, just talking notes I want to say, is oftentimes we talk about aesthetics, and then, you know, my, my house and our street's garbage is picked up by 10:00 AM, and that, and after 10:00 AM, it's clean. It's a good-looking street. Versus, you know, if everybody had garbage cans, it'd be out there all day and then second day, maybe. And, you know, I had this conversation earlier. And one thing is the added load it would take to the code enforcement office. Our code enforcement office is already pretty, pretty burdened from what he says, and I'm not so sure he could take another 50 calls a day on this. Looking at 10,000 houses, so I'm just estimating about 50 calls a day. And would we have to, you know, if we get into that discussion, would you have to hire an additional personnel to take that overload of calls? And then the effectiveness is, the sanitation department, I say it in front of you, Ms. Board, I think they run an excellent route. I've sat there the other day, we've got about 25 homes on my house, and we sit there and timed them. They picked up 25 homes in about five minutes. Your guys, they're booking it. They're going fast, and I just don't see how they can do that. You know, I figured at least a minute a house, you know, just the effectiveness of the routes is going to be, the time is going to be definitely increased. But that may combat the workers' comp claims. And then also, the last thing, the citizen morale. The one thing I probably continually get positive comments on of the bags, people feel like that's... get positive comments on of the bags, people feel like that's something they expect every year, that's something that they enjoy getting from the city. And I think that you, you know, want to keep that citizen morale up and provide the bags. But I'm always up, if it's not, I'm always up to look at the cost and compare, just, you know, right now, I've not found a constituent yet of mine that's called, been in favor. And last, I think Mr. Gaskin made a good comment, I know he's gone, but maybe we could check in on that, pick up for the bags, if individuals, if some people aren't utilizing them, you know, and go to that. I mean, same option, and maybe you'd find that only 75% of the, in the homes in Starkville will pick them up and that may be another additional cost saving. So, I guess that's most of my, most of my, and the last thing, I've only heard, again, that was, I heard today, somebody said two or three, there's only two or three cities in the state that provide the bags. And that may be a good thing. That may be, you know, one of our positive points at a city, we can do that for our constituents is to provide a bag. We don't have to go to carts just because everybody else is doing them. That's all I've got to say.
Further discussion. Any further discussion? And we have no motion pending. Any further discussion on the topic? Any further discussion on the topic? All right, if there's no further discussion on the topic, then we'll move to the next topic. If there are any further discussion on the topic? Any further discussion on the topic? Seeing none, we'll move to item that was previously item J reordered to be item B, and that is the consideration of accepting the lowest and best bid of 419 parole from Dyna Pack for garbage bags for the sanitation department and the affirmation of the continued city policy of sanitation election using garbage bags. Discussion. Alderman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the recognition. Let me just briefly say that I want to reiterate and rethink the sanitation department for doing an extraordinary job in the distribution of garbage bags throughout the city of Starkville. And I want to further commend the sanitation department for doing an exemplary job in picking up the garbage throughout our city. I have always, as, you know, over the last years and even today, I received a lot of positive comments about the sanitation workers, how they do a great job. It is my knowledge and recollection that we have always used garbage bags in the history of Starkville for sanitation collection. As I said two weeks ago, there has been no public mandate, no public request, no public outcry for moving away from the garbage bag. This appears to be a very legitimate means for our city to continue to move forward with this. The residents have just been taxed by the city of Starkville for an additional $2.50 per month for residential garbage collection and the commercial garbage rates has increased $4 plus per month. With that being said, I have received numerous calls today and all have been in the affirmative for a continuation of the city's policy with the use of bags for sanitation collection. I mentioned also that our current system is not broken. As a result of it not being broken, then I am of the opinion that it does not need fixing. Therefore, with that being said, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of accepting the lowest and best bid of $4.19 per roll from Dyna Pack for garbage bags for the sanitation and environmental services department and the affirmation of the continued city policy of sanitation collection using garbage bags. Mr. Mayor, I want to pass this motion down here so you don't have to try to restate it. And I just reduced it because I know you asked that motion. I just want to make sure you have the exact wording on it.
The motion, as previously stated by Alderman Perkins, has been reduced to writing. I am placing a copy of the written motion with the city clerk. Is there a second to Alderman Perkins' motion? Go ahead, second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Perkins. Do you wish to speak on the merits?
Not this time, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion by the members of the board?
Mayor, I've got a question, two questions.
Alderman Carter?
Has the price been increased since last year? I mean, I know that's the lowest and best bid, but is that a dramatic, dramatic price increase?
No, no.
Has the millage rate, has the millage thickness of the bags been, has the millage, I get people asking if they think that-
The millage is still the same, 1.5.
1.5?
Further discussion?
Mayor, I believe we, the proper, I would just want to maybe amend it to make sure that the price, I mean, I believe that bid has possibly expired. It has not, okay. Just want to make, make sure, okay.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote on Alderman Perkins' motion, which has been reduced to writing and as previously stated, I will not reread. Please answer yea, nay, or abstain as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter?
Yea.
Alderman Parker?
Nay.
Alderman Corey?
Yea.
Alderman Dumas?
Nay.
Alderman Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
By a vote of four in favor with two against, this measure passes. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of the approval of the city attorney attending the MML Legal Conference in Jackson on January 27, 2011 with advanced travel authorized. This is the portion of the conference that is for city attorneys. It's a good program and I would recommend approval. Alderman Perkins?
Mr. Mayor, let me just articulate this very carefully. I have already respectfully informed my distinguished colleague from Lous County that I am in opposition to it. Let me tell you why. It's nothing personal, but it's all legal and precedent here. The reason I'm against this motion is because, or this request is because, number one, of course, we approved Ms. Bruhl, she is a city employee. The board approved the contract for our city attorney as an independent contractor, which went into effect on the 22nd day of September of 2010 and that contract expires on the 22nd day of September 2011. The difference of that legally is that as an independent contractor, we pay the city attorney a certain sum of money. And at the end of the year, he is distributed by the appropriate city official a Form 10-99. And when he gets that 10-99 form, there is no deductions that have to be made by the city. When you get a 10-99, it's independent contractor, you pay your own withholdings, federal, state, Medicare, Social Security, and retirement. When you are an independent contractor, you know, you have to utilize your own funds to defray your costs and expenses. And even though this program is good for him, I mean, it's good and he needs to attend it. But the point is that the taxpayers of the city of Starkville shouldn't fund that. We have 282 employees in our city. 257 did not get any pay raise. Only 25 city employees received a pay raise. The city employees also had to bear, including but not limited to, the additional cost that was mandated upon them by the increase in retirement through the Mississippi Public Employees Retirement System. This would be a bad precedent for the city to use taxpayers' monies to pay for the city attorney. I do not recall the city utilizing money for an independent contractor. Now, the money may seem small, but you have to be very careful because if you set this precedent, the precedent is going to be there. And not only that, you know, the city attorney just received an additional hourly compensation, you know, under the old, this, he's an independent contractor, paid with taxpayers' funds, so there's no secret. So, he was making $95 an hour prior to getting an increase. He just got an increase in pay. His pay went up, nothing personal, I just got to make the case for the taxpayers and the public here. The city attorney was making $95 per hour. We don't have some city employees making seven or eight, I mean, eight or nine dollars an hour. You know, you know, and he was making $95 an hour and he, and his, got an hourly increase up to $105 an hour. Now, if I'm making $105 an hour, I know I can pay 300 some plus dollars to go to a conference. So, that's, that's the difference here. Now, you know, we have the former city attorney, when he was here, we, I think, you know, we may have done that. Why? Because he was a city employee. He was a city employee, but we do not need to make a precedent just because we got money in the bank. Now, this is where we can save money here. You know, we can save this money and the city attorney, you know, making the money. See, when you make money as a professional, any other person, you have to save money to go to these courses. And I have to have 12 hours of continuing legal education every year. And who pays for Alderman Perkins' continuing legal education? Alderman Perkins. I don't want no handouts from nobody. I don't expect anybody to pay it. So, you know, and so when you're working for something, you just have to save your money for a rainy day. You know, you know, we shouldn't depend upon governmental assistance. We need, we need to be able to take care of our own bills. And since he is an independent contractor, that is the reason why we should not pay this. Now, it may seem trivial to some, but there's a big legal difference here. He's not an employee. So, when you're not an employee, you have to pay your own costs, your own monies, your own benefits, you have to save for this. And whereas Ms. Bruhl, and the reason I had no objection to her, because she's a city employee. And so, and a lot of the fact that we had 257 employees who's not gonna get no $300 this year. And yet, we have given the city attorney an additional $10 an hour, $105 an hour to the taxpayers of the city of Starkville, and yet want us to pay 300 and some dollars to go to a conference in the capital city. And that's, that may be, you know, I'm not an accountant, but that may, you know, be something that can be deductible, I don't know. I'm not professionally an accountant here, but the bottom line is, is that it is an independent contractor, there's a legal difference in employee. We do not need to set this precedent because if we set this precedent here, you can rest assured that down the road, there may be another independent contractor who's similar situated and say, well, yeah, you know, this what you did for the city attorney and I expect you to do the same for me. So, I just want us to proceed carefully. These decisions can come at the hunters, you know, and I just want to try to do what I think is right for the city. I want to try to make the right decision and do what I think is best. And I just wanted to share this with the city attorney ahead of time, but, you know, I don't think this is the right thing. But yet, this course may be good for him, but, but the, but the thing is, he needs to pay for it after, from using the funds of the taxpayers of the city of Starkville. And I am respectfully requesting for all those reasons for the board to defeat this particular request. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
And let me briefly make-
Yeah, ma'am. Let me first say I always respect Alderman Perkins' position and he is right. He never comes in the back door on me, he always comes through the front door. We had this conversation before the meeting today. And I also appreciate his adherence to fiscal responsibility. It is a worthy aim and that's always at the forefront of his mind and I do highly respect that. Let me touch a little bit on why this CLE is a good thing and then I want to address specifically his concerns about a bad precedent and about the distinction with independent contractor status. First, there's really no, this is not a boondoggle. There's no luxury or glamour in this request. It entails me driving down between 6:30 AM and 9 o'clock to Jackson, going to a six-hour CLE that runs from 9 to 4 and then driving back from 4:30 to 7:30 at night. Secondly, the CLE is really good. And one of the main reasons it's good is that the assistant attorney generals, the people who actually write the attorney general opinions that we rely on so heavily, give updates on the law. And all the legal hot-button issues that the AG is dealing with, that had a direct benefit on the city this year. Last year, the board allowed me to go to this and I was an independent contractor last year, just like I am this year. And Lee Janis spoke about an issue that later in the year, Ms. Bruhl asked me about. And I said, well, the CLE materials that we got at this speak to that. Look in the CLE materials. And that saved about maybe an hour or two hours' worth of research right there. So, really, right then, it paid for itself. Third, there's a lot of good cross-pollination between the city attorneys all over the state. We get to talk about the issues that are at the forefront of our municipalities and talk about how we're dealing with those. And there's a big gain there. With respect to precedent, I went last year, so the precedent is already out there. And with respect to independent contractor status, I would respectfully take the position in opposition of Alderman Perkins, that that's, that's a distinction without a meaning. My independent contractor status benefits the city because you guys don't have to pay me health benefits or retirement benefits and that could be a savings up to 20 grand. So, the city's saving big time and I shouldn't be penalized for independent contractor status. Then I want to touch on the rate that he mentioned. The city pledged to pay me exactly what it pledged to pay me last year. The increased rate is me taking on that risk to be more efficient this year. The budget line item didn't move, so there's been no increase in payment overall. It's just a rate increase to me to be more efficient on my end so I can better balance this work with the other work in my practice. So, for all of those reasons, I would respectfully request the board grant approval for my attendance.
And let me just state that my reason for making the recommendation that the city attorney go to the conference is that I think we are very well-served by having an attorney that gets what I think is most certainly the most up-to-date legal training in providing municipal legal services. Now, he may choose to go on his own if the board defunds this, but he also may not. And I would prefer that not be in his court. I think it's something that we need as a city and I think it's very worthwhile. With respect to precedent and contract, certainly there is nothing in his contract that requires us to do this, just as there would be nothing in any other independent contractor's contract, unless we wrote it that way, requiring us to provide training for them. However, at every instance where we have an independent contractor that would benefit from training that is out there, and I think it would be necessary for them to do the job at the best of their ability, I would make a recommendation at that point in time that we provide that training as well. Discussion. Alderman Dumas?
Move approval.
Alderman Dumas has made a motion to approve of the city attorney attending the midwinter MML Legal Conference in Jackson, Mississippi on January 27, 2011 with advanced travel authorized. Alderman Dumas, sent your motion?
It is.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Corey, Alderman Dumas. Do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Alderman Carter?
City attorney, if you could, will you be on the city time?
No.
Further discussion?
You won't bill us for that day if I go back and, you're not gonna, you plan, don't plan on billing us for that day?
No, no, I'm, that's a CLE for me. I'm not, I'm not working for the city of Starkville there. I'm learning.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take this by roll call. Please answer yea, nay, or abstain as the city clerk calls your name on Alderman Dumas' motion.
Alderman Parker?
Yea.
Alderman Corey?
Yea.
Alderman Dumas?
Yea.
Alderman Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn?
Nay.
Alderman Carter?
Yea.
By a measure of four in favor with two against, this measure passes. The, let me see if I can follow my agenda.
Building codes.
Okay, yeah, that concludes the board business portion of the agenda and will take us to building codes and planning. The first matter under building codes and planning is the consideration to approve P&amp;Z item number FP 10-09. Mr. Griffin?
Mayor, the first item before you this evening is item FP 10-09, which is a request by Elwin Company LLC for approval of Starkville Station RV Park, a final condominium plat located in C2 General Business Zoning District. Subject property is located at 100 Lincoln Green behind the University Square Shopping Center at the corner of Highway 12 and Blackjack Road in Ward 4. Applicant is proposing a plat of 44 lots and common area or an approximate five-acre site which will be utilized as an upscale RV park. City water, sewer, and electrical service connections will be provided at each RV site. The roadways have been built to city specifications and are to be dedicated to the city. Sidewalks are proposed for the site and will be constructed at the same time as the RV parking pads. The city engineer is currently working with the applicant's engineer to determine costs to determine bond amounts for the final layers of asphalt, sidewalks, landscaping, and detention vegetation. These bonds can be provided prior to execution of the final plat by city staff. The as-built drawings were submitted this afternoon, but the city engineer has not been available to verify that all of the infrastructures, such as the stormwater detention facility, have been constructed as proposed. A water tap and fire hydrant have been installed but have not yet been pressure-tested by the city's water department. The standard developer agreement has not yet been executed or submitted by the applicant as required by condition number ten of the staff report. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the final plat as proposed with thirteen conditions provided by staff, adding a fourteenth condition at the meeting. The water department has recommended that a fifteenth condition be added stating the fire hydrant shall be pressure-tested by and receive approval from the city water department prior to execution of the final plat.
Discussion. Alderman Carter.
This is a one-way all-the-way round, correct?
It's not a one-way. It'll probably be one-way for the RVs that are parking, but traffic can be two-way.
Is this going to be able to get a fire truck in here and make these turns?
Yes, sir. The fire department was involved in the development review, and it meets the turn radiuses, and they were also, they also located, they also identified the locations for the fire hydrants.
And this is the RV park that's going to have a, more or less run by homeowners association?
They have a condo association, and the covenants have been provided, and I believe Mr. Latimer's looked at those as well.
Alderman Corey?
Does approval of this final plat need to be made contingent upon any of those construction issues you mentioned?
Absolutely. They should be completed prior to staff execution of the plat.
Are those all included in the fourteen conditions?
Yes, sir.
Fifteen.
Well, fifteen, including about the water department. That wasn't, that came up today because of the fire hydrant and the pressure test.
I got a question.
Alderman Dumas?
What's the, or I'm sorry. What's the rush here? I mean, what? Is he waiting on something as far as the middle of final plat before getting these items completed?
Well, the applicant, the engineer, applicant's engineer is here to answer that question.
Well, I mean, is there, I'm just wondering why we need to, I would rather not approve a final plat contingent on anything. I would like to see the, from that standpoint of the construction side, because technically from a, help me out here, is there going to be, after final plat, there's no real, is there a CO involved with this?
Actually, the only thing that would receive a CO would be the bathhouse that's being constructed. That's the only structure that's going to be on the site. There'll be inspections of the meters for the electrical connections by the RVs, you know, when they plug in, because they're separately metered for electric power. So, those would have to be inspected when they're constructed, but that's an individual site issue, the same as on a house. It's an individual issue. The water is master-metered, and the association is going to, at least that's what the covenants are to, so there's not an individual water meter, just an electric meter.
So, one meter.
It's a master meter, what they call it, and the association will pay that, and however they divvy that up amongst the RV lots.
Because I'm thinking of other projects in which this very board has set through looking at issues in the way of how construction issues were not resolved and the idea that certificate of occupancies were really the only thing that we had.
That's absolutely correct.
And when we approve a final plat, and the only thing that's maintained are, the only thing that's left on the site that does not have a CO is the bathhouse, which I would not see as a considerable issue from the standpoint of the timeliness of a CO on a bathhouse.
Right.
As opposed to the completion of the site.
When we had the development review committee meeting, there was even more items that weren't complete, and I believe the city engineer has been to the site four or five times to meet with the developer and the contractor and the general contractor for all the construction items. I believe four times, maybe five.
May I ask a question?
Do you, ma'am?
Mr. Griffith, when you were telling your bullet points, I want to make sure I understand all the improvements they're lacking. Can you run those down for me again?
The only, well, the water tap was installed by the city and a fire hydrant, but they, as far as I understand, they've not been connected and not been pressure-tested for the hydrant, because of the pressure for, again, for the fire department.
That's the only improvement that is out there?
We believe so. The other items have been complete, except for the erosion control vegetation, the sidewalks, and the final layer of asphalt. There was a question at P&amp;Z about the retention pond being complete. Again, the city engineer didn't have the as-bills to look at those. We were provided those this afternoon, and he's not here this afternoon or today, so he hasn't been able to look at those. I talked to him on the phone. I did let him know that we had received that, and he wasn't able to open that up and look at that online, so wasn't able to give us any indication.
Further discussion? Alderman Carter?
Just to remain consistent with my previous vote, being the only Alderman that voted against it, I just want to explain that's the reason why, is to remain consistent with my thoughts on this, so I will be voting against it.
Further discussion? Alderman Dumas?
I'd like to move to table this issue until these items are resolved.
Alderman Dumas has moved to table the pending item, the consideration of the approval of P&amp;Z item number FP-ten-dash-oh-nine to, did I say the table? To place that matter on the table. Alderman Dumas has made a motion to place that matter on the table. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Alderman Perkins. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
All right. Let's do it by show of hands. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
There is no discussion.
When a motion is tabled, in play.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. All right. By measure of four, did you vote?
I was in favor of the table.
Okay. One more time. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By measure of five to one, this matter passes. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of the approval of P&amp;Z item number PP-ten-dash-oh-four. Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Mayor, the next item is a request by Starkville Twelve LLC for approval of residence place, a preliminary plat located in the C-two General Business Zoning District. The subject property is located at three-thirty-five through three-forty-one Mississippi Highway twelve west at the site of the former Coke plant between the Middleton Court Shopping Center and the Army Reserve Center in Ward Two. The applicant is proposing a commercial subdivision of four lots for the five-point-six-nine-five acre site. Three lots are located adjacent to Highway twelve, and the fourth lot is located at the rear of the site for a proposed hotel. Potable water, sanitary sewer service, and electrical service will all be provided by the city of Starkville. There are no roadways proposed to be dedicated to the city. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary plat as proposed with nine conditions.
Alderman Dumas?
Is there a reason that on the entrance road between Lot one and Lot two, the sidewalks don't meet going east-west? Do you want to have a, do you want to come look at it? It's not showing on the design. I know this is a plat, but...
Well, that was because of on the plat, the individual lots, as they're developed, will be installing the sidewalks. That lot that you're referring to, we've had a site plan review, and actually, I believe the only thing that's pending for that approval is a revision of, some minor revisions to their plan and approval of the plat.
So, that will include an ADA ramp to cross their entry road to continue down Highway twelve?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Castleberry had provided a letter stating that some of the sidewalks that serve that lot are on the adjacent property that will serve that, so, and I believe that's what one of the conditions that the city engineer had required for the plan review for the proposed, not the plat, but the plan for the other lot.
Because I didn't see that in the conditions. That was my only question, because it's on the plan, it's showing no connectivity across the street, which I think, as we all know, that's a significant piece of the sidewalk moving down Highway twelve, so ADA access needs to be there. You see it there?
For Lot one?
Yeah, between Lot one and Lot two, on that road that they're showing in that right-of-way.
Yes.
Notice how those sidewalks make it to the edge of right-of-way, or make it to the edge of curb and then go straight down. They don't show a ramp accessing the roadway there so that they can move across the road.
Yes, sir.
And on the other side, where they have their other easement, or entrance, east, on the east side of the property, they do show that. They show the roads intersecting perpendicular with the sidewalk.
Take a sec.
You may.
I have another drawing to maybe clarify that.
Okay.
Hand me the hard inter奏 procedure. This is a drawing of the, this is the Lot one plan that shows the ADA ramp.
Oh, okay.
What he is referring to.
It probably is. That's what I was seeing.
That's the only issue I had.
Oh, okay.
It was part of the site plan on the individual site, not for the whole plat.
I need to pick up on the plat that it is.
That's fine. With that, I move approval.
Alderman Dumas has made a motion to approve the residence place preliminary plat as proposed with nine conditions recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear second?
Sir.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. The next matter on the agenda is the request for consideration of a reduction in the retainage for the project from ten percent to five percent for a remaining retainage of forty-three-thousand three-hundred-eighty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. This is from the fire department. Chief Man.
Mayor and Board, I'm happy to report that the fire station is about ninety-nine-point-five percent complete at this point in time. It appears that this, somewhere in the middle of December, that we should be able to take ownership of the building or come to you, ask them to be allowed to take ownership of the building. This request regarding the retainage is a standard in the process of a building at this stage, you know. It's, I'm kind of sitting in for Bill. Bill is sick today, and he couldn't be here, so I'm trying to sit in for him and explain it as best I can. If you got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
Chief, I think you've done a good job at ninety-nine-point-five, so that would justify your lowering the retainage from ten percent to five percent.
Yes.
With that being said, Mr. Mayor, I move that we grant approval and authorization reduction in the retainage for the project, being Fire Station Five from ten percent to five percent for a remaining retainage of forty-three-thousand-three-hundred-eighty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Alderman Perkins has made a motion to approve of a reduction in the retainage for the Fire Station Number Five project from ten percent to five percent for a remaining retainage of forty-three-thousand-three-hundred-eighty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Corey, Alderman Perkins. Do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Alderman Dumas?
Chief Man, one of the highlights of this job is Christmas party your employees throw with all the good food. Are we going to have it at the new station?
I don't think we're going to be able to. They're not going to allow us.
Well, you just need to let us know when you need to get in. That's all I have.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. Do note that Alderman Vaughn had re-entered the room, so he was present for the vote.
Yes.
The next matter on the agenda is the request for consideration of change order number four to include landscaping in the amount of ten-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. Chief?
On this particular item, it's, we knew going in that things was going to be, money was going to be tight and have to shift around back and forth and all. And we have a landscape plan that was submitted prior to the building, and it's at the building department, but again, Bill is sick today, and he's the one that's got the landscape plan. I wanted to bring a copy for each of you, but we couldn't get a hold of it because he's got it. But the plan is, far exceeds the landscape ordinance that was submitted tonight, and I want the board to know that there's, that we will be able to meet the landscape ordinance with this, and with any additional monies, we'll just keep adding to the landscape and all.
Mr. Mayor, very briefly, that was one of my concerns. You answered it, because I didn't see it in documentation. We're far exceed the landscape ordinance, and I was wanting to see the details, but I can see that later and understand Bill's absence. And with that being said, Chief, I'm going to move that we grant authorization for the change order number four to include landscaping for Fire Station Number Five in the amount not to exceed, in the amount of ten-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Alderman Perkins has made a motion to approve of a change order, or, excuse me, approve of change order number four to include landscaping in the amount of ten-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Corey, Alderman Perkins. Do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Was that Parker? All right, I had...
You dropped the gun on me a little bit. I was just going to, just, I was going to verbalize my nay vote.
Hold on one second. Let me make the call on the vote, and then we'll move back into discussion. The vote I have is five in favor with Parker against. All right, so now we'll move back into discussion on the matter. Alderman Parker?
I was just going to verbalize. I agree with everything. I was a little concerned about a restocking fee that we had on there that I know we can't get an explanation on tonight, so there's really no way to get an explanation on that tonight, but that was the reason for my nay vote, for a generator restocking fee.
Any further discussion on the topic? Alderman Carter?
Can I ask a question? I just don't know, so I can't ask an opening question. What happened to that retention if something were to pop up totally unexpected, but you drawn all the funds down? Where would you get additional funds if a two-thousand dollars?
There's still a contingency fund.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion on the topic? Any further discussion? Seeing none, the next matter on the agenda is the request for authorization to hire Cecil Pittman as the electrical building inspector. Mr. Boyd?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. On October the fifth, the board approved advertising for the position of building inspector for electrical work. This position is in the building department, is funded through the electrical department. We did advertise for the position, we took applications, we interviewed, and we come to you tonight presenting Cecil Pittman as our recommendation to hire for the position. Mr. Pittman has a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering technology. He's currently teaching classes at EMCC in National Electrical Code, residential and commercial wiring code requirements and practices. He is well-versed in code requirements and compliance, and it's our recommendation that we hire Mr. Pittman to fulfill the duties of the position of building inspector for electrical.
Discussion. Alderman Vaughn?
Is he present tonight?
No, sir, he's not.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is there any need for the closed session?
There is not, if you'll let me make a couple of brief comments that can be made in, in opening session.
Yes, sir.
And they relate to our ongoing department head evaluation process. I have received a couple of evaluations from the city attorney. I have not received any other feedback on the evaluations you had on everybody in your executive session packet last week. Unless anybody has any objection, I'm going to give everybody until Friday to get me all of those, and then I'm going to start proceeding, giving the evaluation. Alderman Perkins?
Mr. Mayor, I move that this meeting stand adjourned until the 7th day of December of 2010 at 5:30 p.m. in this room.
Alderman Perkins has made a motion to adjourn until December 7th, 2010 at 5:30, 101 Lampkin Street in City Hall courtroom. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Dumas, Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure passes, we stand adjourned.
It's a record, 7:00. It may be, it may be a record.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavia Hall County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care. In an effort to improve your viewing quality in Starville, WOBV and MetroCast are undergoing several major changes. Channel 5 will be changing its affiliate in the near future, upgrading our equipment, and begin showing programming created in our own studios. MetroCast has made a major investment in its wiring infrastructure in Starville and the surrounding area, and will be changing its channel lineup.